Everybody stay healthy, please, at least to get through the regular meeting.
This is a hearing in the county council.
Everybody good?
Yep.
People have requested away from the notice on March twenty fifth today and until two P M in Cathedral Square. October fifteenth, from here, it was sixteen, and then it was on our card.
No issues.
And October twenty ninth, from sixteen until ten P M in Calderwood, on Calderwood Drive. Color carrying states and color hearings to consider full loads to their public convenience and necessity. Today, Matthew's doing business as Gulf Coast Pellet Tools to operate a pellet product service. Hearing to declare the structure at twenty six fifty seven, Hayless Street. Nine and a half, Seater Street. Twelve, Seater Street, and eleven, one eleven, South of the Road, businesses in Oregon.
Have any questions or any demands or questions?
David, I didn't look at Seater Street. It's nine and a half?
This one's gonna be a little bit unique, Mr. Carroll, because nine and a half is an address that we assigned. It's a vacant lot that has no street frontage.
Uh huh.
It's actually directly behind nine. So that's why we assigned it nine and a half, because that's a logical, physical location. It's behind it. And what you'll see behind it is an old commercial building from eighteen hundred, where the roof has long been gone. And what it's done, it's opened up the exterior walls, which are Old Mobile brick, and the order is degrading. And what happened last summer is when we had our second hurricane, the high land with no roof, the walls oscillate, and it collapsed.
Is that, is that right there?
It's Mr. Quimby's.
Okay.
And what happened is the wall collapsed. Luckily, it did not collapse to the east into his properties. It collapsed internally. Now, what concerns me is the rest of the walls. They're not, a structural engineer has not looked at the remaining walls. We've had a collapse, so the building is unsafe in its current condition.
Is he okay with demolition?
Um, no. He's actually reached out to our office about sixty days ago and stated he wanted to hire a structural engineer to support and secure the walls. And if you'll notice, to the south of this, there's a restaurant.
Yes.
That has an open courtyard, same type of a building, no roof, but they use it as a courtyard. The difference is a structural engineer designed supports for those walls.
But the restaurant next door is Kazzula's.
Correct. It's a separate owner, but I'm bringing it up because this condition exists to the south. And what they did is to use their facility, they hired a structural engineer, applied for permit, permits were issued, and they reinforced those walls.
But it, okay, I was gonna say, it's a partnering wall.
Yes.
And it's two foot at the base and eight inches at the top, because of the way they used to build those buildings. So what do we tear it down?
At this point, the unsafe structure, which would be the old walls of the building to the north of Kazzula's courtyard.
But that's one wall there, is what I'm saying.
I think they're two separate.
So you think they're two?
Two separate.
What happens when we go down there and open up that wall? We found out it's one wall.
More than likely, since this is a commercial business, and I'm gonna really lean towards it, if we go forward, the city of Mobile goes forward with the demolition, we'll have to hire a structural engineer to give us plans to go forward for the time frame. If we go forward with the party wall. Now, Mr. Carroll, I do believe Mr. Quimby will be here at ten thirty, and we can get some additional information, but right now, I looked in our intergo system, and I don't see any permit applications. I don't see any records of applications for C R C. So I don't know what the status is. He may have reviewed it and said, hey, I'm not gonna go forward, but hopefully, he'll be here at ten thirty and give us more information. But right now, I do affirm that this structure is unsafe.
You know, one more thing. Wendell has enough resources to take care of this without us doing it. So my next thing is, why are we expending resources when, go ahead?
That would be a good question for Mr. Quimby at ten thirty.
I'll talk to him. Matter of fact, as soon as we get out of here, you and I will call him.
Yeah, instead of two, one eleven, South County.
Yes. Yes, that one, we wanna go forward with the demolition. It is, we've got some roof and exterior walls that are damaged, and some foundations with termite damage, and we'd like to go forward with the demolition of that one. We have no contact from the property at this time.
Mr. State of the Districts and additions, another communication to the council, also very ill. Sorry, President, to improve our safety and recommendations to each and every.
Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, under budget amendments, did Mr. Hill send anything in for us to review at all? When he calls in and asks, in the future, could you just ask him to submit any amendments if he wants us to review them?
And this goes back to something that we have talked about for a very long time, and people do call in, and this is from staff, but people call in with their topic. We need to get more details other than just the topic. That way, we are better prepared, the staff is better prepared in case we need to respond or answer questions. So don't please keep that in mind. I know Lisa has gone back and forth with people before because they don't want to give us any details. But we've got to be stricter with this, and keep calling and saying, I just want to talk about topic A. What about topic A? What is it you're going to talk about? We don't need you to give us, you know, two pages worth, just what is the topic about? What are you going to tell us about, or what is your concern?
Yeah, and with this one specifically.
And with the amendments, yeah, what are those amendments that you're talking about?
Yeah, and we need the time to do our own research, to look at what this is, how the impacts that it will have, and we need to get a legal review as well, from our legal advisor. So, you know, if they're not willing to put the amendments up front, then, for me anyway, it's not me going in.
I agree.
Reverend Quinby, my final comments about annexation, and I did ask if he had specific questions or issues that he wanted to point out, and he said no, he said just general comments regarding the process of annexation.
Yeah, I talked to him at length. He, nobody knows anything other than a very few people. They just, they're wanting to make sure that whatever the process is, is that we're going about it transparently, and it's clear, and it's fair, this kind of thing. So I guess that would be the point of his comments this morning.
Orders, zero one, zero three, orders, I'm seeing lawyers and one business district.
Any questions, concerns?
Well, it was my understanding that this was one of committee, right?
This was, uh, did we assign that to?
Was assigned to Corey's.
Corey, yeah. I talked to twenty fifth.
Yeah, so why is it back on the agenda?
Because it was held over for three weeks.
Okay, so we didn't match the date for the committee to the day, but hold on.
So this gets to later on?
Say it again.
We didn't have a date.
This is coming up on October twenty fifth, correct?
Yes, correct.
So we need to lay this over at least until next week. Three weeks? We need on the nineteenth, next week.
Eighteen, twenty five.
First.
November first. November first.
That's correct. Just like the summer turn, November first.
Orders, zero four, zero four six, is degrees under the property on South Parkway from R three and B, degrees R three.
Um, it's fine.
The consent resolution is held over, orders, sixty and five, sixty eight, five eighty six, or are the structures committed to local businesses in Oregon demolished?
Yeah, David.
Yeah, Mr. Penn, I've got an update for the item in your district, seven fifty three Rebecca Drive. The owner has pulled a permit. It's actually the tax sub purchaser. They have a permit, and they have secured and cleaned up the property. So I do recommend we table this one.
All right, thank you.
However, the eleven oh one South Bronx, there's been no change in this, that's the structure. I would recommend that we move forward with the demolition.
Is there a timeline with that?
Well, that's CJ's district.
CJ's.
Not me, man.
Okay, maybe. And we've already held it over sixty days. So if you would like to table it until next week, I think we're still good. We have ninety days out, so we're sixty days into that timeframe, so we've got a couple of weeks to follow it up.
And let's just lay this one over till next week, so CJ can weigh in more later, how about that?
And just back to street, this is the one that they were exploring historic, was looking at moving the structure.
Yeah, we want to, but you can't do anything with it.
Go ahead, lay that one over for one week. Then Corey's will take a bite.
Resolutions held over, zero one, eight seven two, authorized improvement to the network for regular access. Zero eight, eight seven four, Bluebird's water training for air conditioning, Disney Air Handling, Squidville Red Center. Zero eight, eight seven five, Bluebird's drivers, Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, who are in, Dodge and Red Control Vehicles.
Hey, can we go back to zero eight, seven four? This, this is coming from where the eighty six, the sixty six thousand, eight sixteen, what line I'm in a voted, is it coming from?
You're looking at zero eight, eight, seven, four?
Yeah.
The sixty sixth option.
It's coming from the general phone?
Zero eight, eight seven six, Bluebird's water truck put in sales, if you want to do it in the area. Zero eight, eight seven seven, Bluebird's water truck building, 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 control vehicles. Twenty one, eight seven eight, construction not leading, four twenty eight, two eight, over, by the ground, construction. Twenty one, eight seven nine, Blue contract between Ryan Ford for recording services. Thirty seven, eight eight, one, two, three, four, basis, seventy two, dog, team, committee, can operate, can add service. Sixty two, in, in, two, all right, settlement, group, and release claims. Consent resolution being introduced, thirty one, thirty five, authorized renovation to State Farm for the good neighborhood, good citizenship, and citizens' rights, and the G P C program.
Madam Vice President.
Hang on, Scott. Which one?
Yeah, thirty one, eighty five. It's just a general question for the administration. I was curious, with regards to all grants, we're at the start of a new fiscal year. Are we seeing, I know we're in a continuing resolution with the F Y twenty three budget. I'm curious if we've seen any impacts on the grants that have been released, that we normally apply for on a year-over-year basis, and if there's gonna be an impact to the city with those grants that we look for on a routine basis. Normally, they still have the funding, they carry over the same funding that you level funded from twenty two to twenty three, but I'm not sure how that impacts our grant. I'd be curious to know that in the next couple of weeks, if that will have an impact on us.
Are you looking to see if these grants are gonna be continued into the next district?
If it's one that we've routinely had, year-over-year, you know, normally, it won't, even with the C R, but I'm just curious how this administration's gonna work that.
Thirty seven, eight eight six, eighty seven, eight eight three nine, ninety nine one, ninety two, ninety three, recommend an approach with agency for conditions of especially this regional, the devices to the, um, lounge, for Saturday, that food.
Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir.
I think you read eight ninety one, Madam Clerk. I'd like to withhold consent on eight ninety one until it can be considered next week.
This is, can I move a piece through?
Yes.
Yeah. Normally, I think it's talking about a reference to some of the information that was invited about the applicant, and the normal process is that it's removed by the police department and everyone else, and the department doesn't want these to go if there is a problem. Now, that's the public safety director, go back and let me know something before ten thirty, before we say no to this. But it goes through a pretty rigorous process before it gets to us. Now, I don't know if St. Lawrence or Director, you think you'll be able to have some type of management before ten thirty?
It's my intent to have, I answer you before the ten thirty meeting.
All right, that's fine. You have your right to withhold unanimous consent, but like I said, these will go through a pretty rigorous process before they get to us.
And then sometimes even in that case, it's still gonna be up to the council to prove or not, no matter what the police wants.
So just need to know how long ago, what the true cause is, is it something that we don't see right here? So hopefully, we're not disappointed.
Everybody good with the remaining?
Everybody good with the remaining ones that you called out?
Point eight ninety four, eight ninety five, eight ninety six, eight ninety seven, are, um, structures to be demolished. Sixty, eight ninety eight, eight ninety nine, eight ninety hundred, are proven of or special owners to parts of the regulation of one year of one. Proven of or special owners, works at large, in four years of one, and to the public services, in four years of one. Sixty, max zero one, term and corporation, individual private commission, public corporation serves public purpose and containers. Zero three, nine zero eight, twenty eight, people, the private commission, one disabled.
On this one too, if you all don't know, Mr. Peebles is the new director of the Independent Living Center. So I thought he would be a perfect appointee for this particular.
He's a good choice.
I'd also, uh, commission.
Thirty seven, nine, from that, another member, total conditions of especially this retail, the devices to Tim, and Dennis. When we start to develop the commission, it's best to have. See, if the resolutions being introduced, twenty one and nine, in relation to our last contract, eighteen R P construction, for citywide roadway, striking markets, one million, one hundred and five thousand, ninety two, all three cents.
Madam Vice President.
Uh, Mr. Penn?
Is this one of just primary roads, or is this, where is this gonna cover? What?
The entire list is in the packet, but this is primarily our major.
I'll review it, thanks. I missed out.
Jennifer, when do you think all this will get done? Everybody can show, I'm having to bring them in, get through this process, I'm getting the contracts done. They've got all their material, they're a new company, you know, just to name this a new company. So there's, there's need for the area, but some of the personnel, people were familiar with, through other groups, that say come to work with this group. And so everybody can pull the trigger, the daily contracts are sold.
Good news.
Well, and I think too, in order to help everybody understand, and Scott's probably supposed to be a question too, where the striking action occurs is not generally within neighborhoods, that's heavily trafficked corridors, that kind of thing, especially when we resurface, but not always with the resurfacing, it's just a, it's great.
In between, in between resurfacing, and then you know, that's probably the last plump of the asphalt, so. A lot of this is stuff that maybe was resurfaced for about years ago, and we have to strike.
It's great, and yeah, thanks.
Resolutions being introduced, thirteen nine, zero three, authorized general, general construction, and sudden construction for Anne Street Refillation Party, thirty eight thousand, two thousand, two thousand, forty cents. Twenty one, nine zero four, authorized contract, Bill Smith Electric, for combo athletic field lighting at Michael Peters Park, fifty thousand, five hundred dollars. Twenty one, nine zero five, authorized contract, which first five maintenance, for general services, go to the Maritime Museum, for seven thousand, seventy twenty one hours per year. Thirty five, nine zero six, authorized system, mobile planning for city-owned property located at sixty four, forty nine, Michael Road. Thirty seven, nine zero seven, consent approvals to the proposal, against necessity, to Gulf Coast Pellet Tools to operate, pellet products.
Let me back up to Lisa, again, with the county for the Moffett Road area. This is just a renewal of that contract, like, somehow.
Well, we're gonna parcel out, I think, five acres that the county's using, and we're gonna take possession of the rest of that acre, I think about twenty five acres, with the intent of probably moving the mounded unit out there from the local lease point.
I thought it was something about a cell tower.
Is there, Carlin, is there, sir?
Where's that at again?
It's an entrance into Magnolia Grove.
It's the entrance into Magnolia Grove, so again, what we're doing is almost confusing with what I was.
So I think, and Carlin can correct me, I think there's about thirty acres out there, the city-owned property. We've been leasing it to the county, it's a little sheriff's posse arena up on Moffett Road.
Okay.
They're not using the arena part. We need to relocate our mounded unit, and if you don't want to pass this round.
Is that in the city?
Yeah, yes. And so, we're gonna take the twenty five acres and probably build that out for a mounded unit, and take it off of the property that it currently sits on.
Corner of Anne and the fifteenth.
And it's crazy.
Well, the street is a state highway. As you turn into Magnolia Grove, that's actually county property, and then you go so many feet, and it becomes city. So it's quite the interesting little setup out there. We need to go ahead and just annex that little strip of Magnolia Grove Parkway into the city, so that we don't continually have these problems.
Or have the county vacated, deem it no longer use necessary for county.
Whatever. Because every time we try to do a project out there, we have to go with, through the county to get into memorandums of understanding, and back and forth, trying to do things. Just installing some lights was quite a process.
Madam Vice President.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Twenty one, nine zero four, show the case, um, the condo, is that the baseball, is that what the football field is like, baseball?
Just, yeah, just the name of the company, and it's a great, I'm hiding.
Like, okay.
And I don't know, Mayor may be talking about this at our meeting, but I know the fire department has a new promotional campaign going on, and we have an education event out at Layman on Friday. I just wanna make sure that we are able to provide that information, you know, during the meeting. I can do it, or y'all wanna do it?
His part.
If you would do it, I might not be there.
Okay. We have, um, Harvard going to carry to add.
Yeah.
Um, Scott, go ahead.
We're gonna ask for a call for public hearing on the fifteenth of November to amend the administration's amendment to the Civic Center Zone Code. After the committee meeting last week, it was pretty clear that we were in impasse on where we were with what the administration presented, and where some folks in the city council wanted to go. We had a meeting Wednesday night, I think, me and Carroll, myself, and about ten others, stakeholders in the downtown area, to try and come up with some type of solution to move this forward, which we were able to do. And this amendment is what that solution is. And I think what it shows is that if we work together and put our heads together, there's a lot of smart people in this city, we can find a way to get things done that we want to do. And what this amendment is, is a way to take the Populous Plan and mold it into the same space, but using the Downtown Development District codes that's applied throughout the rest of downtown to that site. We amend those codes as needed to ensure that we get the height requirements, et cetera, to work. There still will be a setback issue for the engineer, or, yeah, the engineer building, but I'm sure that is a problem once they go to the board of adjustments and get that waived. That's done quite frequently, and for that building, it makes perfect sense. So in my mind, this is a way to make everything happen the way that moves things forward, and it puts us in a position to have the flexibility with the space that we want, that we can still go forward with the engineer bill as presented, as well as the Populous Plan, with no other stipulations on any other master plan, using what we have already used for the downtown area in the city. And I'll be happy to answer any questions with that, but that's what you're gonna see in writing, and I think it shows the flexibility that this gives us to do what we need to do, move forward. You know, I'm tired of hearing that we'll be able to say perpetual, perpetual. And, you know, when you get to things, and you get to an impasse, and folks aren't willing to compromise on things, that's where we gotta get better. And I think this, if me and Carroll, like, and work together on this, they come to a solution, you know, everybody on the table take notice on where we are, and that's exactly what we're able to do, and become closer friends as a result of it. So that's the amendment that you'll see on the table.
Okay, any questions, comments, Ben?
What's the process for, for all of this? There's some public hearing requirements, and then there's publication requirements, is that right?
Well, before, Scott, before you answer, that was one thing that I asked Lisa this morning, because the other proposal went through the planning commission. So we would be, in effect, looking at amending the amendment. Is this something else that has to go back through?
No, it does not. I've checked with legal on that. And because we're amending, it's the same thing that we did with the re-districting act. You know, and because we're amending that, it still came through the planning commission, and this is ours action. So, you know, the answer I've gotten from legal advice is no, we do not have.
Much legal advice, who?
This was, what's the name, the attorneys that looked at this? I know Wanda Cock.
Wanda, Casey Pipes, it's been three minutes, all attorneys looked at it.
We wanna make sure.
You're more than one.
Right, you're, the council is certainly entitled to amend the proposals.
Well, I just wanna mention.
Under eleven fifty two, I believe.
But it doesn't have to go back through the entire planning commission process to do that.
Well, that was the process question, but I know also the administration wants to be able to take a look at it, if y'all see any comments.
This amendment will be published, and we did, it would have been done already, but the help that I was promised has not arrived, so we're delaying. So when we get this in writing, and that will be done hopefully by the end of this week, all of the legal steps that need to happen to have this amendment done and advertised will be completed, as well as this amendment will be published for people to look at. And that's, you know, if there's any questions from the administration, we're happy to answer those. I think what you'll see is, based on everything that I've been told, this meets the needs of everybody, and it moves us forward. I'm happy to answer any of those questions as well, you know, that's what the public hearing is for as well. And if there's any conversation from folks within the city that have issues or concerns, I think that this amendment will answer those, beginning with, we're more than happy to address those in any other detail that is needed as we move forward. But after that public hearing is, comes back before this body are voted on, then once it's voted on, then it gets enacted as the decree for that area.
So basically, we will be doing two public hearings on fifteen?
Yes.
Correct. So it goes out for advertising, just like the other one that we already set on fifteen?
So, I wanna make sure I understand, the, the plan that we, that went to planning commission, it's already been published, is that correct?
Has it been advertised?
Yes, it's publication last, right. That was last week. The first day past, last Tuesday's meeting, it started its process.
Okay, so it's been published, all right. So even if we amend, I remember this with U D C, even if we amend that, it still has to be republished again?
Which we're gonna do.
And so we're going to publish it before we?
Have a public hearing.
And that's required?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and to continue with the process, whatever is advertised, if we come back and make amendments to these amendments, doesn't it have to go back through the process again?
It'll be re-adapted.
Yeah, it'll be re-advertising, go right back through, if we make more changes.
So, I think what we did with U D C was helpful, was. So, so I think what we did with UDC was helpful was, as soon as possible, I'd like to see this amendment. I think it would be appropriate to distribute it amongst all parties so that all party can, parties can fully consider it and maybe there's an opportunity to make amendments to that before it's published?
Um, hang on, hang on. I think a lot of it's going to depend on the timeline to be able to have a public hearing on the fifteenth. I'm not sure how that's going to work, Lisa, in fact, if you do come back with one, wanting to make some changes.
Amendments to this after the public hearing.
And then has to be republished again?
That would have to be republished, gone over.
Madam Vice President, let me say this, um, just like any other amendments or changes that we'd like to have seen made that were in the past, we'll get it to you hopefully in a day or two or a few to go through it. And I know that's a short span, but again, you know, it, it's proven that we check and we check everything. Just as it though, to say this morning, I received an email with information on it, on subsets, which was informationally incorrect as to what the amendments were gonna be. Not all of it was true, so I said, y'all don't take that email and, and run with it because it's not exactly what's happened within the amendments. But that information will be given to you, it will be given to the city attorney, it will be given to Edgar, to everybody else, just like the standard process before we move forward so that you can look at it. Same thing as in the district, same thing with the resolution that was actually a clear and transparent process for, for a district. Same thing as was done with the UDC, you'll have a chance to look at it before we actually put it out.
Just real quick, what you're gonna see, the sixteen story height requirement is there and the three story height requirement is there, which all came out of the planning commission and was changed in the planning commission and was passed by the administration to us. So all we're doing is revising the TOs and, and, and making them usable for that district and, and which again shows the flexibility that we have there. So it, it's exactly as far as the height requirements and the only thing that, that's not going to be met is the setback for the core material, which again is gonna be very easy, simple fix to go to the board of justice and get waited for that. So I, I don't see any issues with it.
Just, and let me interject for some.
Okay, Billy, if y'all please wait until you recognize this, this conversation among yourselves.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, and let me interject this, in, in case there's some confusion or a thing that the core of engineers has not been involved with this. Uh, the project manager for this building was there for every minute of every meeting that has been held to make sure that they were comfortable with any changes that we were doing to the site facility. That was fine. The only thing that anybody questioned was the process and how to go through the BCA, but that's been explained and the core is absolutely okay with that.
So we will advertise this, y'all get the amendment to everybody as quickly as possible so that everybody has a chance to look at it and formulate any questions, any changes, maybe ahead of time if possible. Uh, but for both of these to be coming up for public hearing on the fifteenth. Anybody else?
When is the ad, yes, Madam Vice President, when is the advertisement going out? What date is that?
Friday.
This Friday?
Yes.
And we haven't even seen the amendment yet. So, I mean, are we?
Again, it, it, it is what it is. I mean, we were held to time constraints to get that out and done. I would have had it on the table if I'd had the help that I asked for and I didn't get, and that's where we are.
So why are we doing it such, and Madam Vice President, why are we doing it such a crunch time, I guess, as I'm saying?
Well, let me say this, I'm sorry, Madam, this, Madam.
Just, just, just trying to keep it.
Madam Vice President.
Okay, go ahead.
We're still trying to work with the time constraints that the core of engineers and everyone else wanted to be the change first and have them, have their ability to do that. In order to do that, then we have to go out and do it just on this timeline in order to make sure everything is in place for them to go through their process so that they can start as they, they want to start. So what we're still trying to do is accommodate the developer for the site is while the timeline is where it is. Now, we can push it back and push them back a little while, I don't know how much it's gonna hurt them, but there is some flexibility there in time, but Ben, if we have a resolution, I mean, I think we should move forward with the original timeline if we can.
Ben?
I thought we were slowing the core of engineers' project down. I thought that was something that was discussed.
Well, we did slow it down to a point of thirty days. I mean, we haven't moved forward on anything that was proposed to us now for just about thirty to almost forty-five minutes.
I just hate, I, I'd hate to try to accommodate them, accommodate them so much yet, not accommodate the process that we have, right? So I'm, I'm going to see an amendment on a very short timeline and then we're gonna run a publication, which is gonna cost taxpayer money. And then if there's something we don't like, I mean, one word that we don't like, then now we're talking about an additional three more weeks of advertisement at a later date. I, so I think the, a one week holdover, just one week, where the publication doesn't go out this Friday, but maybe next Friday, and at least gives.
You could have two separate public hearings.
Yeah, we could have.
Well, Lisa, I think Lisa's probably.
Or push back the other public hearing.
You've, you've already set out the other one for the fifteenth, so, so that's, that's going. I, I think what they're trying to do is make sure that both of these are public hearings on the same day.
Which makes sense.
And also to try to accommodate the core of engineers and their timeline. Now, we can push back the one that Ben's talking about another week and I don't know how that hurts anything necessarily, except for that'll be two different things that we'll be looking at to give them time. You know, and then just, but if we do do it on the fifteenth and Ben has some issues and we agree to any changes, of course, you know, that's a big if, then it would have to be re-advertised, we just have to, have to deal with that. Yeah, it just kinda is what it is, I guess, at this point. Okay, other things, uh, we will be meeting next week on Wednesday, just want to make sure everybody remembers that. Committee meetings coming up, the Corey's, yours is the twenty-fifth.
That's correct.
Billy, did we set another one for you?
The fifteenth, to discuss these two issues before is with the Civic Center.
The nineteenth. Nineteenth.
The nineteenth, is that Tuesday?
Yeah, that's what we meet next week.
Oh, that's Wednesday, okay, nineteenth is, I'm sorry. I don't know what the fifteenth, I know what the fifteenth is stuck in my head, I'm sorry.
And the fifteenth of November will be Public Service Committee meeting for the mental health review and that will be, my understanding right now, that will be joint committee with the county commission, with us.
So we're gonna be downstairs with them, I'm guessing?
I would make that right of the mission.
Cassandra, if you will, make sure to work with them on that, to get the information.
Fifteenth of November.
Correct.
All right, anybody else? Mayor, Julie, Mayor?
If you want to remind everybody, there's a June call with Paul Meneca this afternoon. I think the information was sent out about board governance, hope all the city council can join in that, to report that.
One, I'm not poking or sticking a finger in a wound, but listening to Scott today is one reason why I'm always concerned about the council not having staff or lawyers or GIS people or people that work directly for us to be able to do council actions. Sometimes inadvertent delays or not having the people to be able to get things done on amendments or changes in resolutions person our process. And when we have no one to do it, we have to sometimes try to go outside to do it when we have the resources in the house. So I hope that we can find some kind of way to manage our opportunities together when it comes to resources and personnel that provide services for the city and, and it helps us all get to an end. So I would appreciate that consideration going forward.
Anybody else? All right, we'll see you next month.